First Buncombe County briefing meeting to order. Thank you all for being with us. Commissioners, are there any questions about the items on the agenda? We're going to talk about the CARES Act funding and some uses of those funds for individual assistance in childcare. We're going to discuss high performance building and efficient fleet policies and get an update on COVID-19. We're not going to vote on any of those issues. These are all just updates and discussions and briefings in preparation for upcoming meetings. Anything else that any commissioner wants to cover at the meeting today? Great.
Oh.
Okay. Thanks for the reminder, Commissioner. So that's in reference to discussion about the process to use for us to appoint members to the Early Childhood Education Committee, which obviously we spent a lot of time on this in the last meeting. We're kind of in transition from the way we did it before to the new way, so I think we just want to check in on that one to maybe make a decision about how we're handling the transition. Okay. Anything else? All right, well, let's get started then with the presentation on CARES funding for individual assistance in childcare. And Sybil Tate and Philip Harden will help us out with these items.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. So I wanted to share information about two programs that we're working on to provide support to our community during COVID. Can you not hear? Is that better?
Better.
Excuse me. Okay. So as you know, we did receive CRF funds from the state to provide economic support for the community. And we are looking to provide $400,000 each to an individual assistance program and a childcare program. The individual assistance program, again, will be $400,000. We're hoping that will last through December. The focus will be housing assistance and eviction legal services, and funds can also be used for other life essential needs. It will be modeled after the One Buncombe Fund program. As you'll recall, most of those funds were spent on housing. We will also be working with PISCA Legal Services to provide legal assistance for those who are facing evictions. And we'll be working with HHS as well, just like we did with One Buncombe. The childcare program, again, it's $400,000 through the end of December.
Ms. Tate, could you back up one, please?
Sure.
Thank you. Can you tell me more about what legal services would be and at what point those would be administered on the eviction legal services?
Sure. So PISCA Legal Services will be monitoring the court docket, and as folks come through, they'll be in touch with them. And if they need legal services, then they will be provided to them, and HHS will pay for those services.
So let me ask you something. If, well, as part of all of this, will we be assisting people to be able to stay in their houses, to be able to make payments on their houses before they get into
Absolutely.
... that situation instead of, you know, because you've got to balance, we all know this, but you've got to balance that with the people that own the property and, you know, and all of that to make sure it's done in a compassionate way. So, you know, it seems to me if we're trying to invest money prior to that would be
Yes.
... that would be money well invested.
Yes. So there is a proactive piece, and then to make sure, hopefully, people will not be involved in the court system, and so they can go directly to HHS, just like they did when One Buncombe was functioning. But, you know, there may be times when some people, you know, are not aware of that, and so if they are, if they do enter the court system, that's when PISCA Legal will be made aware of them and be in contact with HHS.
So they'd be trying to work with their landlord to try to figure out a way, once they're in the legal system?
Yes.
To be able to stay in their homes and to just kind of restore everything back to the way it was before
Yes.
... COVID hit, right?
That is correct.
Okay.
But folks will all, can also come directly to HHS before they enter the court system.
Okay. Thanks.
Yep.
Let me ask, now, are we talking about 400,000 or 800,000?
Good question. It's 400,000 for each program, so a total of 800.
Okay. Yeah. Thanks.
Yep. So childcare, again, this is also modeled after an existing program. Our current program provides subsidies for families at 200% of the federal poverty level. We're looking to increase that to 300% to capture that moderate income group who may need help with childcare costs due to COVID. We're looking to partner with Southwestern Child Development. There'll be no cost to families, and again, just like with the housing, the checks or the funds will be sent directly to the provider.
Oh, good.
So our next steps...
Okay, one last question, I'm sorry.
Sure.
May not have the answer, but, so when we're talking about $400,000 on each of these, do you have an idea how much goes to the end user? I mean, how much of that 400 they're going to get? I mean, is 50,000 going to administrative costs, et cetera? Do we have an idea of how much of that will drop? Will go straight to the community?
The full 400 will go to individuals.
Okay.
The cost for legal services, do you want to help me? That's in addition to 75,000 for PISCA and then
32.
And 32 for Southwestern.
So the 75 and 32, where would that be coming from?
From those same funds, the CRF funds.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
So that's on over and above the 400,000?
Yes. Yes. I think we were done with that one. Yes. So again, we're working with HHS staff to get ready, also working on the contracts, and working with communications on outreach, and we're hoping to begin by mid-September. And that's it. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, and Philip Harden is here.
I've got a question.
Sure.
So you're saying these are modeled after programs we already have in place?
Mm-hmm.
So if, can we not follow, can this money not go into those programs, or do they have to go to a different program, and we would save $32,000 and stuff like that?
Yep. So, Philip, you might have to help me with this one, but we have very limited funds in the existing program, so that's why we're wanting to really increase that amount, because we anticipate a high level of need.
So I'll jump in here real quick before Philip says. To your point, if we could save money on this, the programs that we currently have, these are the providers of those programs, to increase that level, they're anticipating that that level of increase, this is the cost that they will have to administer that.
Okay. Okay.
So PISCA has already been contracted with for administration of housing assistance funds?
Correct.
In the earlier COVID response as well?
No, we did not use any of our earlier money for this response. This is the second money that we're getting for CARES, the second half of this money.
I thought we said we did provide housing assistance, though, in the earlier...
That was from the One Buncombe Fund, the one we raised from our community.
Right.
But we didn't use CARES money to do that.
Right, but the way I heard the question was, we administer some housing funds that way earlier, so is, would it be possible to do that again?
Yeah, I'm just wondering if the 400,000 could go into the One Buncombe, if we're going to model it after that program, and just keep that program going.
I hear you. I mean, I love PISCA Legal, they do great work, and they're a logical partner on something like this. But it is, it is a large percentage of the funds going to kind of an overhead cost, so just, I think it's a fair question.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm tempted to answer that. From a housing perspective, yes, we will be modeling One Buncombe and actually using the same eligibility criteria. So it's really no different, to some extent, from One Buncombe and how people apply. It's just that we want to scoop up some of those folks through the courts that are already sitting in the court system now, who face eviction and homelessness. And that's where PISCA comes in, because they're already working with those families to try to prevent that homelessness. But that wouldn't be the entire funds, as was mentioned earlier. I mean, we want to work on prevention also. And from a childcare perspective, what we really hope to accomplish with those funds is that for school-aged children, the income limit for subsidy is 133% of poverty. So we have a lot of families who, who may be eligible for younger children, but not school-aged children. And, you know, with the school situation right now, there's a lot of need out there for school-aged children. So moving that to 300% will hopefully help, we really feel like that a lot of those funds will be spent on school-aged children. So there's a need there, and we're trying to cover that need. Using Southwestern helps us. We contract out the administration of the subsidy program already and have for like 10 years. And so they determine eligibility for subsidy. So what we want to do with these families who apply for this fund is determine first whether or not they're eligible for subsidy benefits, and if they are, we will put them on regular subsidy. It's just when they are not eligible for regular subsidy, we would, we would move to this program.
How much do, is, for the 400,000, I mean, maybe it's impossible to know right now because we're just starting this, but is there any way of kind of getting a sense for how much HHS might administer on the housing versus PISCA Legal?
From the housing, we will administer the 400,000. The eligibility will all run through HHS. PISCA will provide the legal piece of that, and if they have a family that they want to work with, they'll do the referral to HHS, and we'll determine the eligibility and move forward with that.
So PISCA Legal is involved because people are, are in eviction process. That's why we're getting them involved. But someone who is not in eviction, who, who needs money, they, PISCA Legal wouldn't be a part of that. They would just go through HHS.
That would be correct.
Okay. So it's not just administration of the funds, it's actually doing, in addition to maybe helping administer some funds, actually doing some legal advocacy for folks who are already in a foreclosure process to hopefully keep them in their house. So it's 400,000 for direct assistance, and it's basically $75,000 for some legal advocacy work to help people stay in their homes. Is that the right way to think about it? Okay. Thank you for talking us through that.
That'd be correct.
Okay.
So is it, is it safe to say that PISCA Legal has a, if I could say it simply like this, has a list of people already that need help, right?
Yeah. That would be correct.
That's a different source than what I was asking about, where, you know, there are those that, you know, they're behind in their payments and they don't know what to do, they're going to contact HHS, maybe we'll be able to help them save their home, save their place, and not get into an eviction situation. But for those that are already in that situation, PISCA Legal knows who they are by nature or what they do, and that that 75,000 is going directly for that alone.
And I think also, if there are new cases being
That's what Chairman said, right? That it wasn't going for administration.
Yes. That's for the legal piece, but there might be new cases that come before the courts that PISCA is going through the dockets every day to see who else is getting filed. So they might not just be a list of existing clients, there'll be a list of people that go to the courts and get filed against, and then PISCA goes, they have a person that goes through the dockets on a daily basis, and that's how they also find clients that have just been sued or charged with eviction papers.
Well, I think if we're going to invest that money, that, you know, we're, we're going to, it'd be good to know, okay, there's 30, you know, people in that situation right now that they're going to be on immediately, and then they'll be, you know, at some point in time, we'll want, we'll want that information back, because what I'm picturing is that we're sitting $75,000 over here. That's in the PISCA Legal Eviction Fund, Eviction Prevention Fund, you know, for those that are already in the legal battle. Is that...
Or will, or will enter there.
Or will be, or will be. And either way, we're going to want to know. I mean, the other day, we had the Buncombe County Job Recovery Act where they came in and they said, okay, this was the number of businesses, this was the number of jobs that were affected, and we're going to want the same, we're going to want the same thing from this, you know? Okay.
Yeah. And I agree with that. I mean, partly because it's, we really don't know how big this problem might be, right? I mean, there's some analysis that shows millions or tens of millions of people could be facing foreclosure or not able to pay rent between now and the end of the year. Hopefully, it's not that bad, but we just don't know yet. So kind of tracking this, anyway, we're just, we'll be interested to see, hopefully, this gets us to the end of the year, but we don't really know if it will at this point, right?
But, but there is a component in, in this where they'll be able to receive funds to, to pay their landlord now, so, and, and I guess eventually, I mean, when they're in the legal situation, they're also going to be paying past, part of that legal help is going to be figuring out how to wait to, to pay back X and help them through that process, I guess.
Yes, that would be correct. I mean, we hope, we try to do some data analysis about where the need may lie out there.
Sure.
And you're, you're probably correct. I mean, we took a guess at probably a million dollars somewhere around eviction issues and those kinds of things.
Yeah. And I know the city's putting in some funds for this purpose, too, and then there's other sources of funds as well, so it's not just Buncombe County funds alone that are the only resources out there to address it, right?
That would, yes, you're, you're right. We have other funds that we use for emergency assistance and general assistance, so it may be a combination of a lot of different funds that are, that already exist out there that we have to use to help maybe one family.
Sure.
That's good.
All right. Well, very good. Any other, did you all complete the presentation?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Any other questions, Commissioners? All right, and this will be on our agenda for our next meeting. Where is it?
No. This doesn't need an action. This is just a heads up to let you know, and let the community know that this is coming forward, and this is something we're working on with the CARES money that's coming from the state.
Okay. And just to, just to make sure I'm clear on that kind of process, this doesn't require commission approval because of discretion we gave within administration of CARES funding earlier? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you very much for the updates. We really appreciate it. This is important, so I'm glad to see this going ahead. Next up is Jeremiah Leroy is going to talk to us about high-performance buildings and future fleet policy.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
My monitor's not on, so I can't see the display. So as Chairman Newman said, we're here to talk a little bit about high-performance building policy and potential efficient fleet policy. Again, we just wanted the opportunity to kind of bring this before you, have a chance to get some feedback on it. High-performance building policies are really a best practice for local governments. We're one of the few that don't have this, local governments of our size that don't have one in writing, and so we really wanted to, to bring this to you today, to get some, some feedback. Obviously, there's a number of reasons that we would adopt a policy or a resolution on high-performance buildings, obviously to reduce operational costs, to optimize the lifecycle economic performance. I like that one in particular, when we focus on new construction in particular, one of the things we need to think about is not just what's the upfront cost, but what is the long-term cost of these facilities? They're intended to be here for 30, 40, 50 years, and so we want to make sure we make good decisions, conserve natural resources, reduce waste streams, and improve water and air quality as a part of, of these new building processes. While it's not our primary topic today, we also wanted to just let you know that we are also working on an efficient fleet policy for the county as well. So the county created a vehicle evaluation team fairly recently, and that's, it's various departments, performance management, general services, fleet permits, sustainability, et cetera. And the goal there is to, to really look at how and when and why we make these purchases and to sort of implement a new evaluation process through which we ensure the purchase of the most efficient vehicles possible, to try and increase fuel efficiency, reduce fuel costs, and ultimately meet our goal of reducing greenhouse gas emissions from our fleet as well. So really, what we're looking at here is, I mean, the end goal is a shift towards electrification of our fleet as the market for electrification matures. So when it comes to building policy, there were a handful of models out there. Some of you have probably already heard of LEED. LEED is pretty well-known. LEED is leadership in energy and environmental design. It's one of the most common out there. There's also the Living Building Challenge, which is a newcomer to this space and the built environment, but something we wanted to look at as well. And we also sort of kicked around the idea of a custom policy, something sort of a hybrid. Can we sort of cherry pick the best of each and, and make our own policy? And really, where we ended up was with coming back to LEED. I can certainly get into the details of why we made that decision, but at the end of the day, LEED is really just the most well-recognized and established high-performance policy in the world, and it, it is available for virtually all different building types. It's research-backed standards. One of the things that's really critical for us, too, is that it's very well-known in, in the built environment space. Architects and engineers are very, very familiar with it. So that professional community is, is, has that, you know, has the knowledge and skills to help us go through that process. Obviously, we consulted our general services department and our construction management team throughout these conversations to, to really get their sense for it, and their preference was LEED as well. And again, it really prioritizes lifecycle evaluations in terms of the long-term benefits, and our ultimate goal here, generate less waste and use less energy. So the staff recommendation is to adopt a LEED policy, requiring LEED Gold for our, any new construction in facilities over 10,000 square feet for major renovations, and we're defining that as anything that is 50% or more of the aggregate square footage of a facility. And anything that doesn't sort of fall into those two categories wouldn't necessarily need to be LEED certified, but could still essentially use that same LEED checklist and employ as many cost-effective measures as possible. So we really wanted, this is the point at which I'm really hoping to get some, some feedback from the commission to really determine how we move forward. We have some additional decision points in terms of, will we want to move forward with this policy? And if we do, do we want to include the new fleet facility that is in the design process as we speak? We're not sort of so far down the road that we couldn't include the new fleet facility, but there are some challenges to that since we didn't include it upfront. And then we have to look at, you know, do we want to potentially include other buildings that we don't, that may not be county-owned buildings, but that we do have sort of some control over in terms of School Capital Fund Commission and those types of things? So do we want to include those types of educational institutions in these requirements? Just some food for thought as we, as we kick around this decision process, so. Once we get some feedback from, from the group here, it's our intent to develop a draft resolution for you all to have a look at and get some feedback on, and then present to the board for adoption at the next meeting. So I, with that, I am very happy to answer any questions. I'm sure there are plenty.
So can you bring the slides back up?
I certainly can. Where would you like to go?
Uh, back. Right, right there. That was where my first question was.
Yes, sir.
So there's no question, LEED is a, is a standard that is used in construction across, you know, you know, major business and government, but what is the difference between LEED and LEED Gold?
So LEED is, LEED has multiple levels, right? So you can be LEED certified, LEED silver, LEED gold, or LEED platinum. And basically, LEED is what it is. It's a checklist, and it's based on a point system. So the number of points you get is, is the level of certification you get. So for example, and I have a LEED checklist in front of me because I was sure that I was going to get that question, so for example, you can get a total of 110 points for the entire checklist. It takes 40 points to simply be certified. It takes up to 50 points to be silver, 60 points to be gold, and 80 points to be platinum. So essentially, one of the flaws of LEED, in my opinion, and although it is certainly a good standard, one of the flaws is that these, it's not weighted, right? So a point is a point, regardless of which category it comes from. So if it's an energy-related point or a transportation-related point, a point is a point. And so one of the things that can happen is that you, you end up sort of chasing points to get enough to get your certification. So maybe you're doing something that you wouldn't have done otherwise, but you need that extra point to get to silver or gold or whatever your standard is. But that's the difference between a silver, a gold, a platinum. We decided that gold was a high enough standard for us, and that was one that, after some discussion with general services, they felt like was reasonable and they could be met in terms of the construction process for most of our facilities.
So the slide before has the, yeah?
Yes.
That has on the right, that's all the point categories, basically?
Those are the point categories, yes, sir.
Okay. So one of the things I've never really understood, and I remember, you know, a previous commissioner that was here that, you know, didn't understand it maybe for different reasons?
Sure.
How I can look at the Buncombe County courthouse with all those windows?
Yes.
And think in any way in this world, it could be energy-efficient?
Sure.
With all those windows?
Sure.
I mean, it's a legitimate question, and to be LEED certified, it may have got some of its points as a result of where it's at, right?
Absolutely.
Location, transportation?
Correct.
And so on, and I think that, you know, the public needs to know that, and I think that we don't need to be, you know, what's the word I'm looking for? That just because it's LEED certified, I don't want to automatically think, well, it is the most energy-efficient building in the county, because that is not the case.
That is a very fair point. That is a very fair point. Absolutely.
And so for me, I'm more interested in, one is the energy dollar amount that we are saving the taxpayer by building that, building however we build it.
Absolutely.
Second is that we're reducing the pollution carbon footprint, you know, of, you know, during the construction process and over time in that building. You know, that, those are, those are two things. But that, the first one, I mean, we can, I think this requires more, more conversation, more information?
Sure.
More numbers, you know, that we could build it, because you said a custom.
Sure.
And I'll, I'll go back to my previous life when I was with Clayton.
Sure.
That's what we did. We wanted green building, and we wanted energy efficiency, and we found flaws in some of these other seals that we could get.
Sure.
So we created the one that would, that would provide the most energy savings, the highest quality for that, that affordability for that customer.
Sure.
And, and, and came up with what we called it?
Sure.
And branded it. And I don't know why the county can't, can't, can't do that, because I, and I, and I'm going to hush, but I don't want us to be misled that just because we're investing millions in, in LEED construction, that it's going to be the most efficient building that we could have built.
Absolutely. Those are very fair points, and, and it absolutely can be the case that depending on what your emphasis is when you build the structure, that you may focus more on things like access to transportation, you know, and receive LEED points for that. I will say that one of the things that we do like about LEED is that over 50% of the points you can earn are energy-related, and so that would be our primary focus. And in fact, one of the ideas that, that we kicked around, and certainly we'd be willing to discuss with the board in terms of how we craft the language of, of a potential policy, would be, do we follow this checklist but then not require necessarily the certification process? Because that frankly is a costly process, that, you know, you can still follow the exact same process and get where you need to go, but without having to pay somebody thousands of dollars to put a plaque on the wall, right? And so that's, that's a common complaint about LEED as well. So we do feel like our priorities are the same. We want the lowest possible energy use. We want the lowest possible energy cost for the taxpayer as well. We certainly would be willing to discuss even, you know, adding potential language for net zero energy, if, if that is something that the board would be interested in. So, you know, at this point, we simply wanted to recommend, you know, a, a sort of an out-of-the-box standard that we can use and that everyone was comfortable with, but we're very open to crafting that language to meet the board's needs.
A question. What is the county's current experience with LEED buildings?
We only have one that we're doing. We've built some to LEED standard, but the new library out in East Asheville is the first one we're going to have that's actually going to be certified.
Okay.
So...
And what are you shooting for on that building?
I'm sorry?
What are you shooting for in terms of what level of certification?
Silver?
Certified.
Is it certified?
Yeah.
Okay. Just, just certified, LEED certified.
Okay, LEED certified.
Yeah.
And the federal building that Commissioner Belcher just referenced, is it LEED certified?
No, it is not certified. It was built to LEED standard, but it was not certified.
Okay, so they did, do you know what standard it was built to informally?
Essentially, that means it was, they used the checklist to build to Essentially, that means it was, they used the checklist to build to LEED silver, I believe.
Okay.
But they did not pay for the certification.
Okay. So we don't have any existing built facilities? The library, the planet, did that one certify? But there's no existing ones?
That will be our first certified LEED facility, as far as I know.
So I know this is kind of a big generalization. I mean, every project is its own unique project. But what do you see in terms of, you know, and let's just, for a moment, I mean, there's all these sustainability and energy goals that we have that are important, just from a kind of purely kind of financial standpoint, what are the generalizations that you see when organizations choose to go for LEED certification, especially a fairly high standard like gold?
Sure.
In terms of, is there a premium for construction costs generally compared to not having that?
Mm-hmm.
And then the operating cost for the facility, like utility costs, other things? You know, because I think a lot of people are just going to think, this sounds great from their environmental standpoint, but, you know, how much is it going to increase construction costs, if any? And then does it, do those usually pay for themselves through lower operating costs?
That's absolutely correct. So it does kind of run the gamut, because you're talking about, LEED can be used for any type of facility. So obviously, a 50,000-square-foot office facility like the one we're in, very different animal than a 20,000-square-foot library. That said, it can range anywhere from as low as seven or eight percent that we've seen to as high as 12 to 15 percent in terms of that premium that you pay for the construction costs. So I think that's kind of a safe range, but to nail that number down specifically, it really is kind of on a project-by-project basis. But for the most part, if you focus on, you know, the energy side of it, which is, I mean, that's where we tend to spend a lot of our time and energy, because I think that helps us meet our internal goals for reducing carbon emissions. And of course, we haven't built a lot of new facilities recently. I mean, we're still in the process with the library, but most of these things are done with the idea that you're trying to make good decisions that will inform long-term cost savings, right? That that lower operational cost will pay for itself. But to put a timeframe on it, again, it's really a function of what type of facility is it and what measures are you choosing to implement? You know, anything from geothermal, HVAC to solar, those all run very different types of paybacks for those types of systems.
So I was trying to remember what the, what we had developed, the Energy Star was the, was what was utilizing house, and then how we came up with Energy Smart, which met the needs of the customers. And the only concern that I have with this is that I'm not against LEED building at all. I think it's a good standard. I think we have to be very careful with the points.
Sure.
And that we have to make sure, because we are a government, that we're spending somebody else's money, it's not like we're in, you know, that we are, that we know how much this is going to cost, and we know how much it's going to save us.
Mm-hmm.
And if that means we have our own hybrid plan, you know, that achieves and meets our goals, because I mean, we just, you know, we just all agreed to invest a lot of money in solar.
Sure.
And we got to have, this has got to, all this has got to roll in together, you know, and because, you know, I don't want us to see automatically, okay, we're going to LEED silver, and then, you know, we come in here and the building costs 52 million when it could have cost 35 million.
Mm-hmm.
You know, so I just think we have to be...
Sure. I think that's very fair.
This helped me a lot. I had no idea that location, transportation, that there was, that that type of point system was applied to LEED building.
Yeah, and that is where it becomes tricky.
Strictly energy savings and like carbon emissions, things like that.
Absolutely. And I do think that is, you know, it can become and should probably be a common practice for us to bring these issues to you as we're making these decisions. So, and I think that, again, we can certainly craft this language and build this into how we inform those decisions moving forward. So for example, if there is a decision to be made, one system versus another system, and we can, certainly part of this process will be the commissioning agents for any of these facilities will be able to run lifecycle costs analysis for these decisions as you make them. And then we can certainly bring those to the board at any time to get feedback in terms of how we move forward. You know, again, we don't build a lot of buildings, so I hope that I'm not here every year, you know?
They're real expensive, though, when we do.
They absolutely are. And that's, I think that your point is that is very valid, that those decisions are critical, and, you know, we're certainly happy to bring them to the board as they're being made.
So Chairman, maybe you know, do you remember Ashwell Middle? Is it LEED certified?
I know Isaac Dixon is. I can't remember Ashwell Middle.
I bet it is.
I bet it is. If you look at some of the stormwater management stuff they do, it's very, you know, different than a typical building. It looks like they put a lot of thought into sustainable design, for sure. So my hunch is that it is, but I don't know the answer.
So you'll remember this. I mean, when that was first presented to us, I think that building was like $60 million or something, and it ended up being 44 or 42. It may not have been quite that much.
Sounds about right. Where it landed in the end.
But it was, yeah, that's where it landed, but it was, maybe been 10 million more. And it still ended up, I'm pretty sure, being LEED certified. So it ended up being a wise investment, I believe it was, that it was a very wise investment for the community. And so, you know, I don't want to belabor this point, but I don't want to think that just because we think LEED certified is good, that all of a sudden, that the commissioners are okay with that, and we're going to, you know, rubber stamp the money. Because if it comes back and it's too expensive, it's our job to say, well, why is it so much?
Sure.
And is there a better way to do it, a better way to build it?
Absolutely. I agree completely.
If it is really feasible, you know, if we said, you know, we do want this to be the policy, but, you know, if a certain situation, it gets much more expensive in a given situation, so our goal is to do LEED gold, but we want to review it on a case-by-case basis. I mean, is it really realistic to have, you know, project costs come in and say, here's the LEED number, and then here's, you know, kind of more conventional construction?
Absolutely.
So that the architect or our contractor, whoever, kind of prices it both ways? Is that really...
It's very common, absolutely.
And that's a common practice. And I think what Jeremiah was also saying is every project we have, we would also look at the payback as well.
Yeah.
So we'll do that cost analysis for everyone. You will see that before we award any contract. I think what we're asking is when we put a bid out, we would put into that bid, we want these standards, and so you can bring to us both options. Right now, there is no standards out there that we are using, so we're asking for that guidance. So yes, it is absolutely feasible for you to put in there that we want LEED gold. However, give us the stick built without any LEED gold, and then what is that cost analysis? Will we pay back in 10 years, 20 years? What does that look like? You can have that analysis for every project.
Do we have any idea on a hybrid? I mean, you mentioned hybrid, has general services and, you know, your department, have they had any discussion about, well, if we could, you know, if we could do it ourselves, here's what we would want?
We have.
These eight components, we'd want to make sure that this is our LEED?
Absolutely. We've had pretty extensive discussions about it, honestly. And I think that's the way we leaned initially. And as we began to build it out more and more, it did, first of all, it ended up kind of looking like a LEED policy anyway. But it also, it really, I think one of the things that drove home to us was, if we do have a custom policy, that's one more thing we need to probably update constantly and tweak constantly and constantly be sort of looking at every couple of years. Whereas if we have an out-of-the-box option, they do that for us. You know, the United States Green Building Council revamps LEED every couple of years, and so it's sort of letting somebody else do all of that work for you in terms of incorporating new technologies and that sort of thing. So that's where we sort of fell back to, you know, an out-of-the-box solution worked a little better, I think, for us. But, you know, again, we serve the board, so we're certainly willing to continue to have this conversation.
And also, contractors should be aware.
Yeah, I mean, that was absolutely a part of it, too, is that contractors, again, are very familiar with LEED, and so it's a little more of a simple process to get, for example, like what you were referring to, can we get the LEED checklist, and can we get the Built-to-Code and give us those two options? And they can do that pretty quickly and easily.
I think all three schools that were approved, Isaac Dixon, Inkintermediate, Ashwell Middle, were all LEED.
I bet they're at least certified, if not some higher standard, is my hunch. So one other question I have is, you know, at the last, you know, one of recent meetings, we voted to put $10 million towards solar on more than 40 public buildings, and the financial analysis on that looked really attractive and compelling. Obviously, you get some points for doing renewable energy as part of LEED.
Mm-hmm.
But, you know, we've moved into this era where the renewables have just gotten so much cheaper than they were four or five years ago, right? Or 10 years ago. So I'm certainly open to this idea, but in a way, like when we're thinking about new buildings, like, I would say, like, if I could only kind of say I want one thing, I would say, build that building with solar design in mind, so it's at least solar-ready. The architecture is developed to contemplate being able to utilize solar, especially in a very cost-effective way, because what the building, you know, design looks like can really make it a lot more expensive or a lot cheaper.
Absolutely.
And so, you know, if we build new buildings, and that individual building is, you know, is similarly financially attractive to do solar compared to what we just looked at for 40 different buildings, in a way, just kind of having a well-designed, well-constructed building that's run by solar power, I mean, like, five or 10 years ago, that would have been like, oh, my gosh, that's the most green building anyone's ever built. But, so it seems to me like that should almost kind of become fairly routine in new construction. And I'm sure LEED certification would encourage that kind of design.
It does, yes.
I don't know, but I guess I'm just saying, my only concern about this in a way is, like, solar seems like such a powerful tool to get towards our renewable energy goals and our energy goals, that kind of putting a lot of thought into how do we build that out is a great opportunity. And, you know, how much attention does, do we draw away towards like kind of making sure we're going after all these points to get a LEED certification when there's this huge opportunity that's just right in front of us in kind of fully developing that opportunity? So it's just, I'm just kind of surfacing that as a question, like, is there not now kind of this just obvious answer for how to get there that we're, that we need to be very focused on?
Sure. I would say that the East Asheville Library is actually a perfect example of what you're referring to. I mean, it was built with LEED in mind, and it was built solar-ready, but without solar being a part of the construction process. And we're actually going through the process right now of evaluating what that would look like, how much it would cost, what solar looks like on that building. And it's much more attractive to do it now, because the conduit pathways and everything is just lined up for solar, and it's going to be a very, very easy install.
That's part of the design of the fleet as well.
And that's the same for the new fleet facility.
So I would just say for my two cents, you know, in addition to whatever kind of LEED policy we make, I think we should have a policy specifically on new construction that, unless it's a site where it's just clearly there's reason solar's not going to be good there due to, you know, mature trees or just whatever factor there might be, that we want buildings designed with solar design in mind and to either, you know, plan to install solar as part of the construction, unless it's part of a plan to do maybe a bundle of projects through an RFP or something like that that we just did. And again, each project should have its own financial analysis to make sure it does make sense in that particular case, but that the default assumption should be, we'll do one of those things. So, and I don't see that as necessarily inconsistent with LEED, but maybe in addition to that, because in some cases, we might say, you know, LEED doesn't really make sense here, but let's definitely install solar as part of the new project.
I mean, I think there's some incorporations, and this is a good discussion, and I know it's probably gone a little bit longer than what people think it should, but I know when Inkintermediate was done and probably other schools, because they have the solar shades, I know where they actually change based on the sun, and that reduces the heat inside the building, all kinds of different things. But I think one of the, for me, a part of LEED that I like that's not necessarily as much energy-related is that, you know, people are in these buildings, and we got to remember that these are not just brick and mortar, as we call them. You know, and the air quality in these buildings are critical, even more today than in the past. And, you know, though it may be solar that we use, it may be, you know, we cannot overemphasize... I mean, you could put, and I'm not against Chairman's, you know, thoughts as far as solar, I think solar should be part of, you know, one piece of the puzzle. But, you know, you could put, you know, and I'm not being facetious, but you could put that on a building, leave all the windows open, you're still going to have a ridiculous energy bill.
Sure.
And so, so you've got to make sure that, you know, the windows are proper, you've got to make sure the HVAC is proper, but that quality, and, you know, and we need to look at these buildings that we're going and putting solar on now, because we may go and put that on there, and then we get all enamored, you know, all tore up because we get, we've done that, it's nice, we protect the environment, and we should do that. But in those buildings, if you've got antiquated HVAC...
Totally.
I mean, though your power bill may be down, you know, and this comes from, for me, if I had my way, I'd replace every HVAC on every manufactured home in Buncombe County to make sure that people had that quality air. So that should be part of it, and it is part of LEED, so that's, you know, one of the reasons that I like that. But as we're looking at increasing the efficiency of these buildings that we're putting solar on, then we need to look at the efficiency inside of that building for the people that are in there that have to breathe that air, and that just because we're putting solar on it, that we don't, we need to make sure we're looking at the coolers and the HVAC units and some of those that, they get neglected a lot. I mean, you can drive around all the buildings and look at them and see the age of them, and they get neglected, and I just don't want us to do that just because, you know, some of these new energy options that can help us and save us money is going to, you know, I don't want it to be the whole conversation. Good comments.
All right, I'm almost done.
I am, though.
I want to talk about the electric, or the vehicle fleet. So that's not a policy resolution that's coming forward like next week like the other one is?
Correct.
The building resolution is ready to come forward soon. What's the timeline on the vehicle fleet policy?
Honestly, probably in the next couple of months. That one wasn't necessarily one that, now, we certainly can update you, but it doesn't require like a board resolution of any kind to do that. But we can certainly update you and give you a heads-up as to what those, what that policy will potentially look like and get your feedback on it. But it's, the simple version is basically requiring the most efficient vehicle possible in its class as vehicle requests are made. And then if that, for example, is an electric vehicle, that's great. If the market may not be mature enough for an electric truck, for example, if that's the request, then we go with the most efficient in its class and then sort of work our way down from there. I mean, that's the general concept with that potential policy, but we're happy to bring that before the board and give you the options there.
But you are planning on bringing the policy in a few months from now, within a couple of months?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely. We should be ready fairly soon.
But it's not, but it's, I mean, the basic concept you just summarized, but it's still a work in progress?
It's still a work in progress, yeah. We've got multiple departments sort of talking through, you know, how do we go through the evaluation process, who has what say in what? And obviously, general services and fleet has a big role in sort of, you know, that decision-making process as well. Do we have the infrastructure necessary to even support electric vehicles if we start adopting them? Do we have the technicians with the experience to work on electric vehicles if we have, you know, any kind of warranty issues, that sort of thing? So there's a lot to discuss about it. But the policy itself, I think we're all kind of on the same basic page when it comes to how we like to move forward.
In terms of creating a new policy, because we don't have, or what is the current policy?
We don't really have a black-and-white policy in terms of how we request vehicles. We have a process that we've used, and it's been pretty consistent, at least recently, that those requests go to general services, and his team, Mike's team essentially, you know, works with fleet and then makes those determinations. Do you need this vehicle? Let me look at your other vehicles. What's the mileage on them? Do we need to even fulfill these requests? And if so, you know, determining what vehicles are available, what's the cost, putting that out to bid if necessary, that sort of thing, so...
But we don't have any county policy in terms of saying, hey, there's such and such department needs new vehicle, here's a model, now here's another model. Maybe it costs more, but it's, you know, a lot less on gas, so...
Right.
How the decision is made to do this versus this, that's kind of just at, sort of at the discretion of the staff level to make those kind of decisions. We don't have a, we don't have a policy on it at this point.
Correct. It is much more of a process than a policy at this point. And that's what we're trying to do, is implement something formal.
Well, I'll just thank you for all that. I really look forward to it. I think it's an important part of the discussions in terms of how we get to our policy goals, our higher, you know, our energy goals, because it's a big part of the footprint, right?
Completely agree.
And when we buy new vehicles, we're going to have them for a long time. So if you're going to try to make changes over 10 years, buying new vehicles today that are not as efficient as it could be or... And when we buy new vehicles, we're going to have them for a long time, so if you're going to try to make changes over 10 years, buying new vehicles today that, that are not as efficient as it could be, or electric or whatever, you're locking in a lot of, you know, status quo every time you buy one of those.
Absolutely.
Look forward to discussing it.
Absolutely.
Any other questions, commissioners?
I just got a comment, so. One is, General Services, you showed a Buncombe County.
Sheriff.
Yeah, you showed the sheriff's car. So then we're talking about General Services. General Services does an amazing job in taking care of the vehicles. I have most confidence in that. I just, you know, when people ask questions about money, they ask us.
Sure.
So, I mean, if we're buying a $60,000 car, well, that's probably, I mean, it'd be good to know how much this car, I bet, I bet it'd blow my mind how much these vehicles are costing now.
Oh, yeah.
And some of them, it doesn't matter what you do, you're going to get eight miles a gallon.
Yeah. Sure.
I mean, if you're pulling it around, so then it might be the emissions and things, so I mean, I just, it'd be good to get more information, good discussion on it. And, you know, I think if we say we're going to have a policy that, that as a commissioner, we're always going to have to, that ordinance is going to show up on our agenda and we're going to be the ones that have to approve it. So that's why we asked the question. So thanks for all the information, that was great.
Absolutely.
One last, you did ask us about schools and other, like, not county, but buildings, but county partnered buildings.
Correct, yeah.
I mean, I think these are all things we want to encourage, but I guess just from a decision-making standpoint, you know, we're not always the driver on the development and design of these facilities. So would it be more of a, the county, here's what the county's doing, we encourage our partners to consider this and we'll, we'll help you where we can, but it's, I'm not even sure we could require it. But what, what are your thoughts on how we would, if we said we want to promote this, how would we do that?
Well, we, we've, we're actually still waiting on that, that decision-making process to determine whether or not we even have that authority, right? So we're, we're asking that exact same question and hopefully we'll find out relatively soon whether or not we could, we could even do it if we wanted to.
I mean, I think they've been doing a great job already, as Commissioner Belcher said, I think they've probably done more than we have in some ways. So, all right, well, thank you gentlemen very much, look forward to talking about this further at the formal meeting.
No problem.
Okay. All right, last up, well, actually, almost last up, but the COVID-19 update, and Stacy Saunders and Fletcher Tove are here to talk to us.
Good afternoon, thank you for having us. So I think Max may have some slides for me. Sure. And while those are being pulled up, I was just going to say, I'm here just to give you a brief update on our current COVID trends and the public health data that we have. All right? So. Our first slide is what you've come to know as the EPI curve. And this is showing us our confirmed cases by date and then the seven-day average, which helps us sort of actually see that, that curve. And as I mentioned the last time I came before you, we saw the low and slow curve early in the spring when we had the stay-at-home order in effect for this state. And then saw that slight bump during the incubation period following the Phase Two implementation and the lifting of some of our restrictions in the state. And, which also coincided with one of our major holidays being Memorial Day, and so you see that slight increase there. And then that leveled out and then there was a steady increase in cases as we moved further into Phase Two and we began to interact with each other more. And more movement in general of people, and which also had another major holiday within that time period, which was July 4th. And you saw that little bit more steep of an increase. Recently, we've been seeing a slight decrease in our new cases per day, that's that very, for you all, the very far-right pieces. That about a month ago, we were seeing close to about 40 new cases on average per day. In our most recent weeks, we're actually seeing more like 20 cases per day. This with a steady community testing strategy and our decreasing percent positivity rate, which I'll, we'll share with you shortly. And mask mandate going into effect statewide, so starting to see that come down just a bit. As of today, we had 2,485 confirmed cases cumulatively and 72 deaths. So this is the slide that helps to show the percent positivity across the state. And that percent positivity, just as a reminder, is that indicator that we use most often to tell us about community spread. This indicator is defined as the percent of tests that are administered that come back to us as positive. And so in Buncombe County, we had 5% of the tests coming back positive throughout July. And we've seen that percent positivity decrease slightly in the past few weeks to about 3.7. So we're hitting just below 4% in the last few weeks. The state has ranged between 7 and 10% over the course of the summer, with most recently being around 7%. So seeing some improvement statewide as well, but not quite at their desired state of 5% or less. Community-wide, over the last six weeks, we continue here in Buncombe County, not just as a county, just as the county being a local government entity, but as our community partners. See an average of about 600 tests administered daily, which is roughly 4,000 tests on average weekly. And cumulatively, over 54,000 tests have been administered in the county. There are several access points for testing in the county and there are three community testing sites that are supported by Buncombe County, which are at AB Tech, the Ingalls in Swananoa, and then the Buncombe County Sports Park. We do have a new registration process in place that I mentioned the last time I was here, that does have folks going to our symptom checker to see if they meet the criteria for testing. And then completing registration ahead of time. And we have Dr. Mullendor here with us today as our operational lead for the community testing site. So if you have specific questions at the end, she'll be glad to answer those as well. And the next slide is our COVID-like illness. This graph shows the percent of emergency department visits in North Carolina for COVID-like illness through the week of August 22nd. Our region is that bright yellow that's close to the bottom. CLI, or COVID-like illness, is one of our earlier indicators, as these are individuals who are presenting to emergency departments with symptoms that are consistent with COVID, but not necessarily confirmed yet. And may not be. This includes all emergency department records with signs and symptoms that may indicate COVID-like illness, including cough, shortness of breath, respiratory distress, and fever, temper, or chills. And this only represents those who are seeking care in emergency departments. And then we also have our Western North Carolina Hospital data, and this is the Mountain Area Healthcare Preparedness Coalition, representing about 17 westernmost North Carolina counties. And you can see that over time, the most recent data is staying stable here since our, since my last report.
So can you tell me what suspected patients admitted means? Is, in the bottom bar, really have to blow it up to see it?
Yeah.
It's checked, suspected patients admitted, and then below that's confirmed patients admitted.
So the suspected would be folks who are coming into the hospital system that do not have a laboratory confirmed case, a laboratory confirmed diagnosis yet. So they have COVID-like symptoms that are, that they have symptoms that are consistent with COVID, but may not have a laboratory confirmed test yet, it could be pending. And then the confirmed one would be your laboratory confirmed.
So we're, so that's saying that we're guessing that they're going to go to the hospital?
In this?
The bottom one. Where it says suspected patients admitted. Be good to have.
This is your hospital data already, so this isn't necess, these are the only the folks who are actually seeing in the hospital. So most of your cases within the, the county may or may not, they may not go to the hospital.
There's a hospital saying they suspect this person has COVID.
Correct.
Right.
This is the hospital data, that's correct.
Well, they, what it's, what I heard is that these folks have COVID-like symptoms, maybe, and they're tested. And they're, they're suspected that they could be admitted. They haven't been admitted, the 35 at the top is what's in the hospital right now. Is that right? Is that admission currently hospitalized?
Currently hospitalized is your patient population, so the rosters that they do through the hospital.
So they, these are people that have been.
Who are lab-confirmed when it's the.
In the hospital right now?
In the hospital.
The suspected means they're in the hospital, but their test is pending.
Right.
But they've been admitted to the hospital.
Okay, so they're in the hospital. Got it. Got it.
That's right, you're suspected, this is all hospital data, so you're suspected.
Okay.
Is in the hospital but not confirmed yet.
So they haven't confirmed them yet, they're there, but they haven't confirmed yet, they're in the hospital. Got it. Okay, but 35 is, is, I know we've asked this question 100 times. That's Buncombe County? Now, see, it's not, is it?
All of Western North Carolina, anybody who's hospitalized, sorry, who's hospitalized from North Carolina, so it could be people from out of state, but they're hospitalized in a, they're in a hospital in North Carolina.
So this data is from your Mountain Area Healthcare Preparedness Coalition, which is the 17.
17, okay.
Westernmost North Carolina counties.
And it's, it's still hospital capacity, so I get that.
Correct, it's hospital capacity.
It's an important number to see. Do we know how many of those people are from Buncombe? Buncombe County residents?
Not from this data, no.
Yeah. I've asked that every time, Hannah, almost. I don't know.
It's a first for me.
People do ask that. It may be, yeah. Maybe there's, maybe, is there a way to just show the mission numbers? I think the paper usually reports this, and then they say, and here's how many are at Mission. Which, I mean, we care about Western North Carolina, but of course, we particularly care about.
Typically, each hospital is going to run their own data reports. If you're interested in that, I'd be glad to reach out to Mission and see if they would share that with us, to be able to share it with you, so you can see what Mission's population looks like. Again, that may not all be Buncombe County residents, though.
It could be people from outside the county who are there.
That hospital serves more than just our county.
Right.
But that is a question we get asked.
Okay.
When we're out, you know, how many's, you know, they want to know how many is in the hospital and they want to know accuracy, they want to know, should I be afraid, should I not be afraid? You know, and it's not that they, you know, want to walk, walk around without a mask, they want to, they want to walk around and not be, you know, afraid that they're going in the hospital. So getting good information, and there's some positive trends on there, and I think we should, you know, we can highlight those and still expect people in Buncombe County to do the right thing. I mean, if we went to 3.7% from 5. something, that's a pretty big drop. It really is. It's not a slight drop, it's 25-plus percent, right?
Yeah, so you're, you're essentially saying the last part of my presentation, which is.
Well, I'll, I'll hush then, let you go.
No, that's great, absolutely, that's going to be my sentiment exactly, that we are seeing our trends go in a really great direction. But that doesn't mean this is the time to let up, that means that what we've been doing is working and we have to keep doing it. So I just wanted to share with you, you know, I get to talk about the data and I get to talk about what we're doing, but there are a lot of people behind the scenes who are doing that work. That this isn't just about numbers, that we have Health and Human Services staff and county staff and community partners who make this happen. So all the strategies that we put in place, it takes a lot of people to make that work. And so I just wanted to share a couple of images with you from some of the testing sites, from our long-term care facility strike teams, to show you that this, the public health family is quite large and includes a lot of folks in the COVID response. And so I just wanted to say thank you to them and show gratitude and express that to you all as well. And then, as you alluded to, we are continued, we continue to remind our community of the three Ws, that wear, wait, and wash. That it's important for all of us to follow the precautions, and when we protect ourselves, we're protecting each other. And the more that we commit to those three Ws, the more likely we're to continue to see our trends go in the right direction. And so right now, the three Ws are our best prevention mechanism. And to your point, we're seeing really good progress in our trends, but in order to continue to see that progress, we have to continue to commit to the three Ws. That's partly why we got to this, this improved place, and in order to continue improving, we have to keep committing. Especially as we move into 2.0, I think you all had just, 2.5, sorry, Phase 2.5. I think you all were just beginning to meet as the governor was making his announcements, that we were moving into Phase 2.5. And we're just learning about it as we walked in today, and we'll be discussing what that means and how, what that means for us. Other questions?
Is it, is it possible to just, I realize it just got announced, but, or maybe, maybe Fletcher's going to talk about this.
Yeah, I can.
What the headlines are from the 2.5?
I can give you the, the brief synopsis.
Yeah.
And then Fletch can chime in with anything else. So Phase 2.5 means the following. Mass gathering limits will increase to 25 people indoors and 50 people outdoors, which is different than our current, which was 10 and 25 respectively. Playgrounds may open, museums and aquariums may open at 50% capacity. Gyms and indoor exercise facilities, such as yoga studios, martial arts, et cetera, may open at 30% capacity. Bars, nightclubs, movie theaters, indoor entertainment facilities, amusement parks, dance halls will remain closed. And then large venues remain subject to mass gathering limits.
Thank you.
Other questions?
It didn't look like it, thank you so much for the updates. Appreciate you.
So Commissioner Fletch is here, and in the past, we have stayed aligned with the governor, I don't see anything here. We can think about that some more, and if there's anything we see differently for our county, we can bring that back to you. But right now, we are assuming that we will stay aligned with the governor's orders.
And remind me, when does the county's current order sunset? The 11th?
That's correct, the current order aligns with the state, which was set to expire September 11th, but the governor just announced today at 3:00 that this Phase 2.5 goes into effect this Friday, the 4th.
Okay.
So does that mean we can, that we can align, make the decision to, to do that, or?
Do we, just remind me, do we actually have, like, our local order doesn't, does it, it does not actually speak to gyms or the size of a community gathering being at 10 or 20? Does it speak to those details?
It just aligns with the governor's order.
So ours will automatically adjust once the governor adjusts his order?
I believe, I believe it references the, the base order, you know, back to 141 and I think 151, the extension. So I think we'd have to draft a new order to match whatever the new governor's executive order is.
Just the number of the order to just say we're with that? Okay.
I think that, I think we do have to do it locally, as we try to make sure that we align. Because there appears to be some, excuse me, appears to be some discretion locally, because the governor's order applies directly to cabinet members and people under his direct control for face coverage.
Okay. Well, I'm, you know, I mean, we've just heard this information, I think it sounds positive. I mean, one of the things I've heard, particularly in some ways related to the gyms, because I feel like there's been a lot of ambiguity about the policy on gyms. They're technically not open, but there's this sort of exception or loophole, which is impossible to document, as far as I can tell. So I think actually just having a clear policy on, you can be open, but here's the limitations on how many folks can be inside, seems like a real improvement over the currently very ambiguous situation.
And I, you know, and to speak to the county and, you know, the job they're doing, I visited a gym yesterday and, I mean, it was clear on the front of that, what you did or you didn't go in. I mean, it was, they were very, I mean, they were by the book and, and people spread out and should have went in and worked out, but it didn't, but I just went by to say, hey. But is there, should we be putting this on the agenda tonight to, to go on and do it?
You can.
Was it dates or?
We don't have the wording tonight, but if you want to go ahead tonight and vote to be in alignment with the governor, then we can draft that language and have the chairman sign it.
Let me tell you why I like being able to do it as quick as possible, you know, it wasn't no fault of any, anybody here, but we ran into a situation last time where. it wasn't no fault of any, anybody here, but we ran into a situation last time where we had discussions on what we might do. Then the media goes out and puts out that that's what we're gonna do, you know, and then we got to deal, then we're dealing with, with that. You know, it'd be good if we're able to have recommendations here, and then we all agree on what we're going to do, and then move forward if we can, you know, if we can do that. That way, it, you don't have the speculation out there.
I, I'd say, you know, we, we haven't had a chance to really sit down and discuss among public health yet. I defer to Stacy, where she'd like, direction she'd like to go with that recommendation.
Is there anything that, you know, that really concerns you with what the governor, considering where we're at now?
I think upon first hearing, staff was talking more about the mass gathering limitation pieces. So we'll, you know, if you have feedback and at the, you know, at the leisure of the board, if you all are looking toward wanting to align, then that is absolutely in your authority to do so. If you'd like for us to go back and think about or give, have your feedback in for us to talk with both our planning and command pieces of it and come back to you, then we can do that as well.
I would, I would, I would prefer for the staff to have time to reflect on this.
Yeah.
I think the gym's policy is a, is a, seems like a nice clarification for what the rules really are, instead of you're supposed to be shut down and no one's supposed to be in there, oh, except you can have an unlimited number of people in there if they say that there's some reason they have to do it. But in terms of the changes, in terms of just indoor gatherings and things like that, I would like our health staff to have a chance to kind of carefully reflect on it, because that's how this thing, that's how this thing spreads, right? So, you know, we're seeing some positive numbers in terms of just number of cases, but you know, one place that we just need to be honest about the seriousness of this is that Buncombe County's rate of actual deaths per capita is, 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 is not a lot lower than the state. And we've had, we've had a lot of fatalities here relative to population, just like the state as a whole. So, and I'm not saying I wouldn't be open to the change, but I would want our staff to have a chance to carefully reflect on it, rather than doing something hasty. So, and the governor's policy goes into effect on the, you said the?
Friday.
Friday.
At five.
Any other comments from commissioners on this?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to get a point of clarification on our parks. And, and how can another county allow for organized softball? If, if, if we're aligned with the governor, why are we not allowing organized softball in, in our parks? Or is the other county going outside the governor's?
We can bring that back to you, but as I understand it, we actually have a contract with the local providers, and they're the ones that would allow the softball tournaments or not. So we actually lease or have a contract with the different providers, the recreation providers in our county. But Josh isn't here, and I can make sure Josh gets an answer and email that out to the board.
So really, it's not us that's preventing organized softball.
There is organized softball.
I believe that was the last ask that we had of Josh, and he said that we have a contract with those providers and what they do. But we just provide a facility, but I'll make sure and get that answer for you.
And the reason I brought that up is I got a phone call on Sunday of a Buncombe County resident who does softball tournaments, but they're having to go to Hendersonville to do the tournaments, because they can't do them in our county parks. And they were being told they couldn't do them here, and I was just wondering why they couldn't be doing, do them here.
Safer to do it here than traveling.
Thank you.
Come back.
No, I'm just going to agree. I think that's a function of the organization running the tournament.
Yeah, I think you're, yeah, I think that's true.
Just that, that's a function of the organization who's running the tournament and not Buncombe County Parks and Rec. And there's some, Josh can speak, credit depth to that.
Because I, because I think, I mean, I think we're having tournaments.
No, we're not. We're having tournaments at, out at the private park in Inca, but in our, our county-owned, Charlesview-owned park, one park that have baseball fields, no, we're not doing them. They were told they could not do-
It's a lot safer to do them here than it is to pile everybody in a car and take them over to Henderson County and do it. I mean, it'd be a whole lot.
I'd like to see if we could clarify as to, is, who is saying no that they can't do it?
And could you repeat just real quick, if you have the info, the current policy on gatherings indoor and outdoor, and then the proposed expanded number?
The current policy is ten indoor and twenty-five out, and the change would be twenty-five indoor, fifty outdoor.
Twenty-five indoor, fifty outdoor?
Fifty.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I, thanks for saying that, Fletch. I mean, I, I think that, you know, where I go, you know, there, I mean, I've been to a lot of places, more than twenty-five people in there, but they're spread out, you know. When you're talking about a gathering, you're talking, and I'm not talking about an event, I'm talking about in general businesses, but if you, you're talking about a gathering, it's like a event or something, right? Is that right, Fletch? Like, if I'm going to have a birthday party, or I'm going to have something like that. Right? Okay. For the record, if I'm having birthday parties outside, we're spread out all over the place, so, there you go.
Right, there's no limit on that, if you can spread out.
That's right.
All right. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I've just got, yeah, a question, make sure. So come Friday is the governor's order to go two point five, correct? So staff will talk about this up till Friday, right? And get tomorrow.
I'm sorry.
So when, I mean, I, I think as Commissioner, Commissioner Belcher said, do we need to say, okay, if you do not see any changes, we do agree to go into two point five Friday, instead of you coming to us Thursday evening and us needing forty-eight hours to come back and have a meeting to say, okay, we're not going in line with two point five? Is that correct? We need to not sometimes say, if staff sees no problem with two point five, we will go into that Friday.
And making a vote of that, I would prefer.
Because we'll have to make the decision not to, right, go into two point five?
Somebody tell me if this is wrong. My understanding is that if we do nothing, the governor's policies related to gatherings and gyms and these other pieces will, will automatically go into effect.
It depends on when your order, when your order, you have a local order that has an expiration date as well, and so-
Okay. Okay, so is that, that's incorrect, because our current, let me just kind of talk this through, kind of talking out loud, thinking, thinking out loud, our current order references a specific executive order number and says, we're going to follow that. And because the governor's order, the new order's under a different number, unless we do pass something new referencing that, then it won't go into effect. We'll just kind of continue to operate under the existing governor's order. So actually, we do need to do something for it to go into effect. Okay, thank you for letting me wrap my brain around the process there.
And so the, I mean, the reason I was suggesting we do it this evening is I didn't, I didn't hear any concern on y'all's part. And a lot of times, if y'all had a concern when this comes out, but y'all just heard it, right?
We did. Quite literally, we were in the hallway listening to the briefing before we came in.
That's right.
Yeah, because it happened at three.
I mean, I don't care to come back, but it'd be nice if we could, if there was a way to do it based on assumption that they're, that they're going to be okay with it. And if, if there's an issue that you, you go back and you meet, and you see there's a, there's an issue, then maybe, other than, we could address it then. But again, like Chairman says, we're trying to talk through this and see what's the best way to do it.
So I'll, I'll ask Commissioner Frue to tell me if what we've done in the past is we can draft an ordinance. After we discuss tomorrow, we have our command meeting at ten, we can discuss what the governor come out, and after we decide and get a recommendation, we can float a resolution to you guys, and you can, you can't respond, because it will be a public meeting. But if you see anything wrong with that, then you can individually call Frue or myself. But the chairman has the, has the authority to sign that order. So once we take a time to look at it tomorrow, we can send you a draft resolution. If you see anything you don't like, you can call Frue individually or call myself, and we can make those changes and send a different resolution out. But the intent would be to have that signed by Thursday, so that can go into effect along with the governor. If we see anything that we don't like, we will let you know that. But you won't have to have another meeting.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that whatever discussion we're having, we're doing it out in public, and whether it just, I mean, if we can do that tonight, and we can vote on it, and then if we have to change it, then change it. And if there's a way for you to do that, that's what I would-
But the problem is, I just don't think we're going to give our, if we, if we do it tonight, we're just not giving the staff time to, not in a political pressure moment, come up with an answer, but just, you know, I think they need to digest this, they need to look at data, and I think they need a couple of days to do that. So for those reasons, I'm not comfortable scheduling a vote on these questions tonight.
Yeah. You know who you sound like, sounded like when you said, for those reasons?
For those reasons.
Shark Tank, I thought you were out. Except for those reasons, I'm out.
For those reasons, I'm out. Okay. But any other, we are talking about it now. This is an open session, so are there any other, you know, any other thoughts or feedback for our health staff as we're here today? Hello, Commissioner Beach, how are you?
Hi.
Good.
You're the other person versus the other.
All right. Thank you very much for the updates. We look forward to hearing further thoughts on this as we move forward and-
I'm encouraged. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you all for your time.
All right. Commissioners, we do have a couple of other, hopefully, quick things so we can have a little break between meetings. Commissioner Whitesides asked that we confer on a process question related to appointments to a committee. So let me see if I can summarize and tell me if I get this wrong.
Okay.
So at the, at the, at the last meeting, we, of course, decided which committees will, those committees can have interviews and make recommendations to the board, and which ones the commission would fully own that whole process herself. One of those we said that we would own ourself is early childhood education, because they make recommendations on funding. But they had already kind of started the process, and so they've done interviews, and they've got recommendations. So it kind of happened before we adopted the policy.
Right, at the same time.
So the question is, is, is do we, do we go with the recommendations? In the future, they would do what we're, we've decided, or do we want to go ahead and, and interview for those two?
So who's on the committee now? Alan, Jasmine, and Robert?
And Robert.
And Robert? I mean, I would, I would support whatever they want to do.
Y'all have any additional thoughts to share with us about the, just the process or where we're at with it?
I mean, a lot of good qualified people, and I'm happy we could do that.
And it was, it was three of us on the subcommittee. I was one of them. And we had, it was excellent people. And the two names we're bringing, it's one from the community and one retiree. As a matter of fact, all of them were PhDs or doctors, except one, and she's starting to work on her PhD at the fore. We had nine applicants, and I think we pared it down to four to interview, and they were excellent.
All right.
So do we want to put them on to approve tonight?
I'm fine with that.
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Just do it by consensus. In the future, it will do the-
Well, in the future, we'll do it, bring the names to the commission to, for us to do you-
I mean, three of them interviewing, it'd be like us establishing a subcommittee to here to interview them anyhow. It'd be the same, it'd be the same thing. Y'all just took care of it.
All right. Well, by consensus, by consensus, we'll add that to the agenda. And, and also, just to clarify, we will also add to the agenda votes on the civic center and TDA position tonight as well. Also, I'll ask for agreement to add that. Okay, commissioners, that's all we had. So we've got a, we'll adjourn this meeting, and we'll reconvene to adjourn for the five o'clock regular meeting.
Thanks.